My pleasure, Legions.
To the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Spencer, so glad to have you back. I would ask that you call the roll.
Palomsky, here. Graham.
Here.
Paludo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Zapatino.
Here.
Dwyer.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum. We are in session. For Agenda Item Number Two, I'm going to ask Chief Freeman and Paul Burris to meet me right over here by the lectern. Okay. As we like to do on occasion, we like to recognize accomplishments that staff achieves here, on behalf of the residents here in Elmhurst. And one of the achievements that I like to tout often is that we're a AAA bond-rated city. It puts us in the top 10 percent as it relates to our finances when we measure ourselves against other peers. There's something, and I'm not going to do it justice, so I'm only going to speak briefly on it, but there's something called ISO certification as it relates to how you classify your firefighting abilities. And when I first became mayor about five years ago, I was meeting with the staff and at the time, an alderman named Chris Healy was on Public Affairs, and we were talking about the ISO certification of our staff and of our police depart-- of our fire department, and it has a lot to do with our public works department as well. And we were certified at a certain level, which was very good, very, very good at the time. And I was told that nobody achieves the next level, Mayor. It's not even worth pursuing. No one's going to get there. I said, "Well, let's look into it at some point," but you don't never say never. But that's where we left it until this evening. I'm very happy to say, and I'm not going to steal any of Chief's thunder, except to say that the people who achieve the level that we have achieved are literally a fraction of the thousands of fire departments across the United States. And without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Freeman to fill in some.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager and Alderman, I'd like to bring a couple of people up, but I'll assure you we're not all going to talk, and it'll just be myself and Paul Burris, but Dan Rosenwinkle, Chris Doofert, and Chris's brother, Battalion Chief Dick Doofert. Would you come on up and please form a backdrop? Because this absolutely is a team effort. This is not one person, it's not one department, it's not the fire department. This is a combined effort that I'd like to talk to you about for a couple of minutes. And Deputy Chief Anna Savage is very disappointed. He's at a conference in Peoria, and he really wishes he was here. The Insurance Services Office works for the insurance industry across the country, and they determine a level of fire protection. They've been in business since 1906 and were brought about as a result of a major conflagration in San Francisco right after the turn of the century where the insurance industry said we have to measure what the level of fire protection is in a particular community. And they've been doing that ever since. They collect that information and data, and they use nationally-recognized standards. So that you know this isn't something that they draw up, but they refer to the agencies that you're very familiar with. You've heard time and time again at different meetings and committee meetings, National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, the American Waterworks Association, AWWA, or the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials International, which is APOCO. Because another agency that's involved in this rating classification is our Joint Dispatch, DUCOM. So it's been around for a long time using these various standards. The rating is based on one to 10, with one being the best, and this is the ISO's words, not mine, although I'm very proud of it. Class one represents an exemplary level of fire protection, and class 10, in essence, is an area or municipality or jurisdiction that doesn't meet the bare minimum standards for fire protection at all. There's four major areas that are evaluated against national standards, and these four are scored and graded. The fire department, which would be the Elmhurst Fire Department, the emergency communications, which is DUCOM. I'm going to jump to the last one, community risk reduction. This is a critical component because the insurance industries want to see what you do to prevent fires. How proactive are you? And this is our community risk reduction. How do we address the risk hazards of the city of Elmhurst through fire prevention code enforcement and public education? And lastly, the water supply, under the premise that the fire department is only as capable as the water supply is adequate. And I'd like to bring Paul Burris up because a major component, the fire department wouldn't be in a position we're in if we didn't have the water supply to utilize in the event that there is a fire. So with that, Paul Burris.
Thanks, Chief. Hello, Council. The water system is about 40 percent of the ISO rating score. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the last couple of years since Chief Freeman brought this up to me and said, "What are we doing for this? And what, how are we going to rate? How are we going to get through this?" And part of that started off with the master plan that our committee council has been given to this year about our potable water system and putting together a 20-year master plan. It allowed us to give specific data within the ISO report that allowed our scores to be graded on a more fair basis than assumptions or estimates. The other part of that master plan was it was the first time we did a hydraulic water model of our system. That gives us the idea of every fire hydrant in town, how much fire flow we can get at 20 PSI. We took that with the standards, and we started color coding our hydrants this year. So as soon as a fire vehicle pulls up, they're now able to determine how much water they can get from that hydrant within seconds versus having to look things up. We started an annual water flushing program. We used to do it triannual. We used to do one-third of the hydrants every year. We moved to an annual flushing. During that, we also started pressure testing all of our hydrants on an annual basis. With these improvements, we were able to give backup data, which we now keep in our CMMS system, our computerized management maintenance system, to the ISO so that they could grade off of specific data, specific points, and be able to pick and choose any area of town they wanted to look at, which gave us the ability to open up the books and be pretty much, you know, open-ended. All this was done in conjunction with Dan Rosenwinkle, Chris Doofert, and the rest of our team, and it was all due to the leadership back here of Chief Freeman to bring us into this early, to allow us to help and assist getting this kind of rating. So I again congratulate Chief Freeman and the city for getting this ISO rating he's going to be talking about. Thanks.
Thanks, Paul. Paul's very modest. The water supply system in the city of Elmhurst has always graded real well, and as the mayor alluded to, we started asking questions 15 months ago, and we said, "We know the survey is coming. The insurance industry does the evaluation every 10 years, and in the interim, every five years, they come out and they do an abbreviated review to see if anything has changed one way or the other." So we knew this was coming in 2018, and we wanted to get a jump on it. We wanted to make sure everybody was tasked with assignments from the fire department to the water supply to code enforcement and so on. So all our proverbial ducks were in a row. Lower classifications are used for myriad things in the insurance industry. It's opportunities for new business, and not like people needed more reasons to come to build in Elmhurst, but it gives the insurance industry a barometer or benchmark what to charge for their premium. Ultimately, it will allow them to write a broader book of business for a particular property, to underwrite more of the property, and most importantly, lower premiums in communities that have a lower insurance class. Better the protection, the better the fire protection, the better the insurance class, the better the insurance premium. So the insurance companies use the ISO grading to determine what the cost of fire insurance will be for property owners. They evaluate over 46,000 communities across the country. There are only 329 Class One communities out of over 46,000. In Illinois, we have over 1,200 communities, and there are only 19 that have achieved a Class One. We've been informed by the Insurance Services Office that effective December 1st, the city of Elmhurst is a Class One. If you put it against the country, or even the state, without a 46,000 communities, we now, we, the team, everybody that touched this grading, and the support from everybody here, from the mayor on down, the support of fire protection facilities for the city of Elmhurst, puts us in the top seven-tenths of 1 percent of the communities across the country. That's an incredible distinction, and you should be proud of that. We are now Class One. Thank you. Representatives from the company which are based out of the East Coast were not able to work their schedules to be here tonight. They sent me a 24-page detailed analysis of their findings when their engineers were out here for presentation from me to the mayor and to the council tonight. So on behalf of the ISO, Mayor, here's your report. And it breaks everything down that we've been talking about in a few minutes for the ISO Class One. On behalf of the fire department, thank you for your continued support, your direction and your guidance. Congratulations on your Class One.
Chief, congratulations. Does it have a picture with everybody up here? Let me hold one of that for you.
Is this the team? You want the guys to write a guy's number?
What happens if they find them colorblind? Are they going to be able to figure out meters out?
Have to be the pessimist, don't you?
I'm the pessimist.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Congrats.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for all that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I recommend a lot of stuff.
Congratulations. Good job well done. Congratulations.
Thanks for keeping the water flowing, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Congratulations for your achievement.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So how much should I save in my moment of chance?
Thanks, Paul. Great job.
Great job, Chief.
I was just going to say, you're kind of a superstar.
Watch your step.
Means to complete this project. I think they don't know if they have the financial means because their, their applications are, are out and won't be back for perhaps as many as five months, perhaps longer. In last week's letter from the department, or the Development Planning and Zoning Committee, they recommended extension based on the letter. But I'm wondering if the DPNZ examined any of those documents? If they examined architectural drawings, mechanical drawings, plumbing drawings, state, local, and federal code analysis? If they examined the applications for financing, the examine, the application to the Illinois Department of Public Health? Or if they just simply said, hey, our practice has been to extend these requests as long as the requests come before the deadline. But that's not what the code says, and that's not what the record says. It's very clear to me that this project has been stalled. It's been stalled for over six months now. What does the city have to gain by extending this ordinance when clearly the code, the revocation code, says that you revoke the ordinance after six months? Why not examine all of these documents? Why not ask the applicant to go through the application process again?
Mr. McNichol, could you wrap up your comments, please?
Yes, thank you. So, in, in, in closing, the code is clear. This ordinance has expired. There's nothing to extend. Even if you chose to extend it, I would think that a rigorous examination of the documents and a, and a second application process would be fair to the residents of the City of Elmhurst and, and help hold the city accountable to its own municipal code. Thank you.
Claude Pogash, 566 West Gladys.
Claude Pogash, 566 West Gladys. Some months ago, I brought up the fact that the school district was thinking about remodeling, actually rebuilding. Well, it's going to be on the ballot. Also, our financial committee stated we got $104 million of city general obligation bonds. School wants $168 million. That's over $270 million without interest that has to leave this town. The city's been more than generous with giving out sales tax, funds, in fact, even the agenda for tonight, signs, city's going to pay for. You represent the people. Those people are the ones that are going to be taxed. They're going to be taxed. They're going to wind up paying that interest in those bonds off. And the schools may very well be necessary. The flooding issues that are somewhat taken care of are beneficial. But there's only one entity that you represent that's paying for it and replacing what you've given away. And that's the people you go to, who elect you. And you continue to do it without hesitation. That resident out there, financials don't increase at the rate you guys like to spend it. And it's not just you. It's the school, it's the park district. There's no, going to be a new budget coming up. When the American Legion asked for, what, $30,000? There was a council member that didn't say, geez, maybe you ought to go get a consultant to see if he can save money. Now, they got the $30,000, but you're going to have a whole group of people coming up here, and they're going to want more money. The general consensus is, well, it costs money to run the city, Claude. It really does. You've got to keep in mind that all that extra money, plus the 270-some thousand, 270-some million, is going to come out of the residents. And the only thing you've got to hope for is that they have it.
Mr. Pogash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
Because they're going to have a choice between feeding their families or feeling the, feeding the wants of government.
Mayor, he's the last one to sign in.
Okay, that's it for public forum for those who signed in. Is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet before the meeting, but wishes to address the council at this time? If so, please raise your hand so I can get a count. I see two, one, two. We'll start from the left-hand side. Mr. Silver, I think you know the routine.
My name is Ben Silver, and I'm a community lawyer with the Citizen Advocacy Center at 182 North York Street. Tonight, I'm following up on last meeting's discussion of a developer's promised gift to the Public Arts Commission during an application process. I appreciate the council's thorough discussion of the issue, but I have several lingering concerns. It seems that the council concluded that this application would have been approved regardless of the pledged gift, and I believe that is a fair outcome. I agree with Alderman Levin that a gift, by its nature, cannot be consideration in a legal sense, and I'm satisfied that the committee and council noted that it was not weighing the gift in its decision. However, there was some indication that such a gift could be part of agreements in the future. I see this as a significant problem from a transparency and accounting standpoint, as it would bypass the city's normal appropriations process. Whereas a sale of land, an easement, a right-of-way license agreement, et cetera, would usually result in a transfer of funds to the city's general fund, and an allocation of money to the Public Arts Commission would be voted on by the city council as an appropriation, allowing a developer to make that donation in exchange for approval would consolidate these steps and remove the process from normal order and record-keeping. It is difficult for me to find a benefit in bypassing the normal process. If the council wants to fund the Public Arts Commission at a higher level, it can do so through the budgeting and appropriations processes. On the other hand, I hope that the council will discourage such gift pledges in future applications and implement policies to bring additional transparency and objectivity to future transactions of this nature. Thank you.
Okay, lady here in front, also.
Good evening. My name is Christina Morrison with the law firm of Day, Robert, and Morrison. I'm here tonight representing Elmhurst Extended Care Center. I'm also here with representative of EEECC, Love Devey. We are 6.10 on the consent agenda tonight. Last week, we met with the DPNZ committee. We had an extended conversation about the process that this extension has been going through with the village attorney. We talked about what EEECC has been doing over the past six months and our anticipated timeline for the next six months. So we ask that you approve EEECC's extension so that this exciting project can continue to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, that concludes public forum for this evening. Agenda item five, any announcements from the dais? Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow night, Tim Ryan of Transformation Treatment Center and a Man in Recovery Foundation will be speaking at a City of Elmhurst Commission on Youth event. This is at Bryan Middle School at 7:00 PM. Mr. Ryan's presentation is from Dope to Hope, and a staff member from Rosecrance Treatment Center will be available at the end of the presentation to lead a Q and A session.
Clerk Spencer.
Just a reminder for early voting for the 11-6 election. It's going to begin in Elmhurst, right here in council chambers, on October 22nd through November 3rd. It's Monday through Friday. The hours are 8:30 to 7:30, and on Saturdays, from 9:00 to 5:00 PM. And also, on Election Day, if you don't know your polling place, please call DuPage Elections Commission at 630-407-5600. Thank you.
Okay, any other announcements? Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple announcements related to the college. This week is homecoming week at Elmhurst College. So there's activities and celebrations and stuff going on all week at the college. If you want to find out the exact schedule and attend that ongoing thing that you're interested in, it's Elmhurst EDU. Also tonight, I can't don my necktie as quickly as Alderman Leader can don his cap, but I am wearing a pink necktie and a ribbon to support the college in their support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Everybody probably saw that pretty audacious picture of President Troy Van Aken and all of his pink stuff on the last edition of the Elmhurst Independent. But the college is way behind, is very much behind this effort. All during our board meetings last week, everybody wore pink. There's going to be like 1,200 students forming a pink ribbon on the quad at the campus and everything, and hope to raise a lot of money to support that endeavor. So just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that. And the homecoming game, the homecoming will be kind of culminated by a 1:00 PM football game against Milliken, and the Public Affairs and Safety Committee has closed Alexander so that tailgating can break out all over the place down there. So come out and celebrate with the college.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Excuse me. Exciting news in, in my perspective, and I believe the city as a whole. Recently, I received the postcard from Republic Services, and this postcard is announcing our changes in our refuse as well as recycling services that are provided by Republic Services, and that is giving the option now to have a 35-gallon refuse container or toter, as well as from a recycling, if you would like to refer to that, food scraps, giving the option now for Elmhurst residents to be able to organically put in their food scraps in a new toter as well. So two great changes to our refuse and recycling. So glad to see that here, and hopefully, everybody is encouraged and willing to participate.
Okay, any other announcements from the dais? I saw a hand. Okay, that wraps up agenda item five. Agenda item six, consent agenda. At this time, is there anybody who has anything, any alderman who wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda to provide further comment or vote no? Alderman Toledo.
6.8.
Alderman Palomsky.
6.10.
6.10. Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Bram.
6.18.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
6.18.
6.18. Okay, I have identified 6.8, 6.10, and 6.18. Anyone else? All right, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 6.8, 6.10, and 6.18. Motion by Alderman Bram, second by Alderman Deuter. Clerk Spencer.
Palomsky. I. Bram.
Aye.
Toledo. Aye. York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Conquis.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved minus items 6.8, 6.10, and 6.18. Onto agenda item 6.18. This is a report out of Public Affairs and Safety. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
Okay, 6.8, correct?
That is correct.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that staff be directed to proceed with final plans and specifications for the proposed electronic message signs to be installed on the Palmer Drive underpass bridges, and to obtain competitive proposals for the manufacture and installation of said signs. Signed by Scott M. Levin, Chairman, unsigned by Danny Palomsky, Vice Chairman, and Bob Dunn.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman Levin.
Thank you. This underpass sign has been on our budget for, or in our budget for many years. It kind of got put aside. We had a bid request, or it wasn't even a bid request, it was, I think you might recall, maybe about a year ago, we had a sign that was erected in the parking lot, and it was sort of the traditional LED sign. For myself and some of the other aldermen that looked at it, it really didn't have quite the quality that we were hoping for. It really would be just a way of putting, it'd be similar to the signs we have see around town, instead of being all amber, it would be multicolor. The committee requested that we look at two, or directed staff to look into some better technology, the latest and the greatest, and we kind of modeled it after. If you are downtown, you see the video displays that are adjacent or part of the bus stops down there, and they found a couple vendors, and I think, maybe it was about a week ago, I didn't see it, but there were some pictures posted. And the quality, in my opinion, was very good. It would allow for, to have someone put up a sign that would look just like the banner with including design and, and all the different coloration features. The benefits are laid out in the report. I mean, there's some safety issues and labor issues in terms of having public works changing the sign, closing down a lane, going out in the cold weather. Perhaps more important is it's a very good communication device. We are booked solid with requests by groups that want to put up a banner, but because it takes time to change it, we only do that once a week, so we have, we can accommodate about 50 different messages. The electronic sign would make it easier for people to deliver the content to us in digital format. We could post it on the overpass sign. It would allow us to, instead of having one a week, you could have the message change every five minutes or something, whatever, you know, is decided. It also allows us to put messages of a more emergent nature. So for instance, if the underpass is flooded, you can put up the words flooded, maybe with some waves going across. Or if there's a amber alert, have someone rowing, that's a good idea. There's an amber alert or some other kind of emergency message, storm message, we could post those. So it gives us a lot of flexibility. It gives us a lot of opportunity for other than the 52 that seem to have it booked year to year to participate in using it. And I've received some thoughts from other aldermen in sort of two regards. One is, does it change the nature of our community to have that kind of sign? And if you saw the sign, it really looks quite a bit like the banner itself. It's not a bright glaring sign, and I've had some thoughtful comments about, you know, do we really need this anymore? We have social media, and I would suggest that a lot of people don't tune in to our social media, but almost everyone drives up and down through town and sees that sign, and that would be the way to direct someone to social media to get additional information. So that's one issue you'll have to decide for yourself. The other one is the cost. This report is not, in my opinion, final action. It's to proceed with those final specifications and plans to allow the project to go to bid to see what the cost would be, and that's what this report authorizes. I think it's a good project. We've talked about it for a long time, and I would recommend it to you.
Alderman Dunn.
As Chairman Levin described, this topic has been in front of the PNS committee for some time now, several years, in fact, and we've had a lot of meetings on it. Really took it seriously, took a lot of information and input from other aldermen, from the community. We did have demonstrations, as Alderman Levin stated, of, of some sign examples last year, then one more recently. And I'm a strong supporter of this. The report shows that, that I didn't sign it, and it is a bit peculiar to see a report with only one signature, but in a, a committee of three, sometimes that happens. I was unable to attend that night, and I got back late in town Friday, so was unable to sign it. But I'm, I think this is a great idea for the, the safety reasons. We have public works out there every week in all types of weather, closing lanes down. It's dangerous for the public works personnel that are up there changing these signs. We have, we have lanes closed down while they're doing it, which is a hazard for motorists. This would be a vast improvement over the current situation. I get it, I get the charmingness of the fabric banner hanging there. It is a bit old-school, but the technology is such with these signs that it's an attractive-looking display, gives us more flexibility and more visibility of, of what's on there. I know trying to drive down that underpass and, and read what's on there, some, sometimes it's quite difficult unless you're going 2 miles an hour, and then you'll be honked at vehemently. So I think it's a vast improvement. We do have electronic signs in the community. There's one at the York Theater, which I believe this particular sign is a, is a major, significant quality improvement over that one. So with that, and voicing my support for it, I want to make a motion to amend this report, to add my signature to it, to further clarify the majority of the committee was in full support of this.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the report before us by adding a signature. I will remind council, which I'm sure I don't need to, but under section 2.06, Council rules, section X, motion to amend, motions to amend communications or committee report recommendations shall be in order, provided however that a motion to amend a committee report to include the signature of a committee member who is absent from the committee meeting regarding which the report was drafted shall not be in order if the motion would change the outcome of the committee report recommendation. Kind of a double negative there, but Alderman Dunn's motion to amend, to add his signature, does not change the outcome of the committee report. In fact, it supports it. So it is an appropriate motion. So we have a motion to amend the committee report to add Alderman Dunn's signature. Do we have a second? We have a lot of seconds. Alderman York. Any conversation? Do I have to? Okay, we can do a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye. Did I say roll call? A voice vote. Sorry, voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, the motion to amend is approved, and Alderman Dunn's signature will be added to the report. Now, the motion to the amended report, or to the amended report now, for approval or discussion. Any additional conversation as it relates to this sign? Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. As Alderman Levin mentioned, he has received several, I was one of the several aldermen that, that reached out to him to share my thoughts on this. And, you know, I essentially just challenge the basic, the underlying assumption, which is, I think, the underlying assumption that this has been in the budget for years and years is that we need a sign there. And, and I would posit that we don't. I don't believe that we need a sign, either electronic or not electronic, mostly because of the argument that we have many, many channels of communication these days, including social media. We have a communications director at the city to get city messages out, and many of the wonderful organizations that use that banner feature have very strong groups that support them on their Facebook or other social media platforms. So the, the underlying assumption that we need a sign there, I would challenge that we don't. I also support the fact that is addressed in the committee report, which is, we can't have our public works employees hanging up signs and being in an unsafe situation anymore. So I also agree with that. However, my, my solution to the problem that's presented therefore is that we just don't have a sign, electronic or otherwise. So when I look at this, I weigh the benefits of, of this location, along with not, you know, the, we really, the, the benefit of communicating in this location weighed against, you know, the reduction in character and, and having any other kind of safety risks. I just don't think that it makes sense in, in my estimation, weighing those two things. So I won't be able to support this report tonight. Thank you.
Okay. The comments. Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to address some of the points that were brought up tonight in the report. I appreciate the work that staff has done. This has been something that has been on the agenda more than a handful of times, and it, I think, first came up when I was on DPNZ, and it was at DPNZ at that point. To address the issue of costs, the idea that this is, right now, the signs as they are are too costly. I think if we want to address that, we could charge the community groups enough to cover the administrative costs like we do with some of our other fees. To address a safety issue, we could either explore a construction of a board or a frame that could more easily and safely be affixed to the underpass or the railing, and additionally require community members interested in advertising there to conform with the type of sign or banner that fits into it. And looking at the utility of it, it's not essential to city services, and when we look at signage around our roads, if we were following the MUTCD and this were a traffic-controlled device, it would be strictly regulated in its color, its size, its message, and if it is a traffic-controlled device, which it is not, but if it, if it were, there would be no advertisements allowed. And does it, does it match the, the bigger issue, and what I've heard from residents about, is does it match the character of the area? I don't think it does. I've supported changes in our downtown. I think we, we need to encourage development. I think we need height to have a healthy downtown. But I, I don't think that having an electronic sign in, in area where we just invested some significant funding for the beautification of the area, I don't think the electronic sign would add to it, so I do not support it.
Okay, here are the comments. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. I'm going to support this report this evening, as it's authorizing the city staff to obtain competitive bids for these signs. Before supporting the purchase of, of said signs, I, I would like to understand a few things, and would like to ask the committee to, to take these items back, if, if you could. General guidelines of operation, with a, you know, physical banner, there's, you're certainly limited, you know, to that. With computerized signs, it's unlimited. So, you know, for example, will the sign be on 24 hours a day? How frequently will the sign content circulate, et cetera? I'd also like to understand the life expectancy of proposed signs, a, as well as the cost of normal maintenance. Like any piece of technology or, or electrical device, they don't last forever. So, so what is the long-term, you know, commitment that we're actually, you know, making here? And then lastly, I, I'd like to understand the potential annual revenues generated from this sign, and understand how those revenues might offset the cost of operation. So with, with that, I will be supporting this report this evening, but encourage the committee to answer the questions I presented this evening. Thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I spoke out before, and when private business has requested electronic signs, I've never been a big proponent of them. Are they distracting? That could be debated on both sides. Do they fit Elmhurst? I believe that could be debated as well. I personally don't feel that it fits the character of Elmhurst. I like the old-town feel of the banners, the banners over the underpass, but I also see, as stated in the report, of the downfalls or the cons of having the banners. I think it was just Alderman Brennan who said the limitations of the banners, the safety issue Alderman Dunn mentioned in the report mentioned about the safety issue of installing the banners. How many can, banners can go up throughout the year? But I, I wanted to touch on what Alderman Brennan stated, because those are some of the questions that I have looking at the report, is I do know that the report mentions about... But I, I wanted to touch on what Alderman Brennan stated because those are some of the questions that I have looking at the report, is I do know that the report mentions about it is in the 2018 budget, but what is, is there an up to spending amount for this electronic sign? It's tough to approve something when you don't have a dollar amount tagged to it. And I would be all for this report without hesitation if that last sentence in the report, in the recommendation itself, installation of said signs was not included, because it's just open-ended to me. There's a lot of unanswered questions from a maintenance perspective, of the operations perspective. We hold other electronic signs to specific specifications. Are we going to hold this sign the same just because the city of Elmhurst is the one who owns it? I'm, I'm making a friendly request if the committee or city staff would like to speak to Alderman Brennan's and, and my questions or concerns as well before voting on this. Obviously, it's your privilege if you so choose to do so or not, but I, I would have liked to seen some more detail in the report, so at least moving forward, I would have a, an understanding of exactly what this does entail and how it compares to privately owned signs as well.
Any other comments? Alvin Levin.
Thank you. To address some of the issues that have been raised, I think we do have to learn, Alderman Brennan, as you say, how long is it going to last? What are the maintenance costs? And I think before we spend too much more time going on the programmatic side, if we're going to have an electronic sign, we have to see what the costs are. The committee, it may be a little foggy on this because it was a while back, we did address some important issues such as the sign will have to comply with all other ordinances and there were a number of changes over the past few years that came through DPZ and signs that allowed for all color signs where it was always just amber before, things of that nature. So full compliance is required there. The only things that we talked about in terms of content was that it could change frequently. We don't want it to be a distraction. The revenue issue is kind of open. This suggests an amount, but it can be adjusted. If you look at the report, it's compared to the cost for the labor to install and de-install the banners with a four man crew, I believe it was, and I think it was estimated something like $20,000 a year. So there is an offset that's kind of important. We also talked about things of, so that they aren't discriminatory in terms of who can, I think these are the guidelines we kind of looked at already, so it has to be a 501(c) approved organization, so we're not, you know, being, you know, content regulators, et cetera. So there's, there's some other issues that we've looked at, but, you know, we got to see what it costs. If, if you are in the camp that Alderman Toledo is, which is you just don't want it, then it doesn't matter if it was, you know, free. But if it's, from, from my perspective, I do want to see what the cost is. We can certainly look at some of the additional issues that have been raised by the two aldermen, but I think it's a good project to move forward and get the bids and see, bring it back to the council and see if it's something we are going to be doing.
Okay, any other comments? Alvin Deuter, I'll go to Alvin Park after.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, because this has been around for so long, I've had a number of different thoughts as, as the discussion has progressed. I initially was not, I like the banners, I like seeing the banners, I think it is kind of an old school and does add some character. But I also, you know, you weigh that, the potential loss of that against an opportunity to increase communication. I think when I first became alderman, we didn't have a communications manager. We now have a communications manager, so our communication is much better than it ever has been before, but it's still, you know, we hear more is better. So even the way that we've enhanced it, I still think the residents would love to get as much information from the city as we can provide and I think this would be a source of it. I appreciate that the report lines, kind of outlines what the cost savings would be and I think it's important to compare that against the final costs. I assume that if the safety of installing the sign that's there now was, I, I assume it costs what it does because we make sure our employees are safe when they're doing it. If that weren't the case, I do think we should stop it immediately, but I, I assume we do make sure they're safe, but it just means there are more people and it takes a longer amount of time. So I support this report. I'm very interested to see what the costs are and to weigh that kind of against the, the benefits that we're getting from it. Thank you.
Alvin Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support Alderman Toledo's thoughts and ideas. I think, you know, maybe we've just gotten to a point where it's not necessary to have banners. Trust me, I love making posters for things, whether we have celebrations or counting down to my block party, I put posters on my porch, it's, I like that anticipation and things like that, but I can't think of any banners that I've seen that are not just like announcing, you know, a gathering or, or some sort. And we've got so many other places around town that people can do that, that if it's come to be a safety issue for our public's work team, I'd rather just not have it there and just have it be the train and that's okay, because I just do not want to put any more ambient light in the world that we don't need. I run around my house shutting off all lights that aren't, you know, people aren't in the room and I just think it's, I'd rather not have a sign that's going to suck energy and maybe tell someone about an event going on, like, it's just not worth the return on investment. So I won't be able to support it.
Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'm going to support this report. I did have the opportunity to go out and look at the test sign that was put up and I thought, it looked great and I was actually surprised at how visible, I looked at it both during the nighttime and the, in the daytime, how visible it was at night and how it didn't really cast a lot of light on, on the other buildings and stuff like that. So that was very impressive to me. And from what I understand, it was turned down to like 10% or something of its, of its potential brightness level. So I think it's really good. As somebody who has an organization that uses a banner, A, it, it's hard to get, it's like reserving a thing at the forest preserve of the city of Chicago. You got to be sitting at, on the city, on the city steps here at, you know, like 8:00 AM on January 2nd to be able to get the right time you need to get your message out to your people on a timely basis. So that's very difficult and I think that, you know, we could, I, I think all the information everybody's asked for has been great and everything like that, but as somebody who uses it, I would pay more than $35 a year to get my message up there because I don't have to produce a banner and I can get it slotted in the time I want and everything like that. So I think there's a lot of advantages. Whether I'll actually be for it when it comes back with all the additional information, I can't say right now, but I think it's worth looking at it and honestly, I thought it looked, you know, really, really good. It was way less noticeable at night. I mean, you noticed it, but it didn't like, you know, like shine and brighten everything up all around. So anyway, those are my thoughts.
Alvin Dunn.
Just to answer some of the thoughts that this may not be needed, there are 52 groups every year that are eager to get their signage up, their message out. They spend money to make their own sign in addition to paying the fee to, to hang it. So there is demand for it and it's not just 52 people, it's 52 organizations with hundreds and hundreds of people associated with that. So I, I would, based on that, I, I would say there's a fairly large demand to have that as one additional medium to get their, their message out. Some of these groups may rely on only that in terms of trying to get their message out. The other point I wanted to make is the budget, I believe is $150,000 for this and, and based on the initial cost estimates for this, the screen and the hardware and the installation, it's felt that we're going to stay within that. So there is some cap on it. It's not going to cost a half a million dollars when the, the final estimate comes back in. And, and the payback on this is, is seven years and that's if we don't charge these organizations. So for, and they're paying $35 a week now to hang their sign. So there's definitely a willingness to, to pay for that. So I think we can financially recover that a lot quicker and have 52 happier constituencies that would support that sign.
Okay, any other comments? Alvin Bram.
Yeah, just one follow-up point to Alderman Dunn's comment. I think the number of organizations is 52 because there's 52 weeks in a year and we only hang a banner once a week. My understanding from past conversations in previous years is that there's significantly more of a demand than just the 52 organizations. It's just that those 52 were the lucky 52 who were chosen to be able to hang their banner.
Chosen.
Um, um, once a week for the, for the full year. So I think the demand is, Alderman Dunn has stated, I think the demand is there, but I, I think that might have been trivialized, unintended trivialized a little bit. I think there's a greater demand than what we can actually meet as of today utilizing the banners.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. So technically, there's two banners displayed every week, one on the north side and one on the south side. So there's really 104 opportunities to display things, just to be clear.
Clerk Spencer, I'm sorry. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer, please.
Are you calling on me?
I'm calling on you to call the vote.
Oh.
Calling on you to land the plane.
Okay. Alvin Palomski.
No.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
No.
Okay, York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
No.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Okay, it looks like 11 ayes and three nays.
11 ayes, three nays, motion carries. Agenda item 6.8 is approved. Onto agenda item 6.10, Clerk Spencer, this is a report out of DP and Z and as you read the recommendation.
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the city council approve the applicant's request for an extension of a conditional use permit for an expanded nursing home facility. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval, signed by Michael Hanquist, Chairman, Noel Toledo, Vice Chairman, Mark A. Mulliner.
Can I put this before council, ask for a motion to approve? The report and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Hanquist, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll defer to the alderman that pulled the report for comments and I'll answer.
I don't know who pulled it. Alvin Palomski, you pulled this report.
I did.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I voted against this agenda item when we first sought and I continue to have concerns. I will be voting against it.
Okay. Alvin Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As one of my neighbors already spoke today, I won't belabor the points. I agree with his and other neighbors' perspective on this in regards to the ordinance, not even in regards to the application as a whole. To me, my interpretation of the ordinance, and all ordinances are relatively vague, left for interpretation, but my interpretation of the ordinance is that this has not been met by the applicant and I would even question to say, you know, when it comes to substantially underway, I would say it doesn't meet that at all. As already stated, the ordinance states, in any case where conditional use has not been established, substantially underway. And I believe I, I read some examples on what that meant. In this case, the applicant, you know, for whatever the reason it is, has not done too much, what I would consider substantially underway. Plaid a survey and starting, or maybe has already applied for financing, and that's it, within the six months. And even by the own, by the applicant's letter, which I feel is outside of the six month timeframe, which again, would say that there should be no action taken and, and the ordinance should be removed or void, even within that applica, within that letter by the applicant, it states, well, we might be able to come back within five months, but more than likely we're going to request another six month extension. So what is substantially underway? Is it a year and a half now? The ordinance says six months and the applicant themselves seem to state that at best it will be 11 months, at best, let alone there, there is some foreshadowing that it might be an additional six month need. So I, I don't think that we meet the ordinance. The ordinance also states, and here's where it's a little bit unclear and I think was more interpretation could be had, has not been established substantially underway within six months from the date of granting thereof, then, without further action by the city council, comma, the conditional use or authorization thereof shall be null and void. Well, is that initiated by the applicant? Is that initiated by the city council? In either case, in this instance, it wasn't done within the six months and I interpret that, that it needed to be done within the six months. So just on our own ordinance, I cannot support this.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Hanquist.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to do what we did at committee and ask City Attorney Storino to give us the comments, repeat his comments to us on the case law that he referred to in our meeting and then I'll make comments to the case. Thank you.
What I indicated to the committee was that the practice has been, from staff's point of view, that we, when, when an application is requested and submitted to extend, we don't, we're not harsh in that we don't immediately require that to be done and effectuated and the extension effectuated by the city council within that six month period. But then what I further said is that from a legal principle, it's completely within the province and the case laws totally supports this, it's completely within the province of the city council to make the decision on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Storino.
Alderman Hanquist.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, as I know you're aware and most of the members of the council are aware, that when the city council passes an ordinance, it's in keeping that the committee, unless there is a change either by the applicant or in the particular case, that we support the will of the council and we move to continue to operate as long as the applicant is working in good faith, which in this case they were, to continue the conditional use for another six months. Previous, even this night, we had a previous case that was pulled that we had extended even a third time for extenuating circumstances and that was pulled from a separate instance. But as one example, we had another case in the last year, we've done the same. I was not in support of that particular case, but it was the will of the council to, to move that forward and we did as a committee. It, it's within keeping, within our traditions and best practices that we do that and the committee did so in this case. Thank you.
Okay, Alvin Toledo.
Thank you. Just for the council's background as well, the committee discussed what substantially underway meant as part of practice, because it is kind of a gray area and we discussed that during our committee meeting when we were discussing whether or not six months, you know, whether or not this applicant might be coming back after that. And substantially underway, the staff represented that substantially underway in Elmhurst under normal practice is that building permits have been applied for, or all the materials for building permits have been turned into the building department. They may not have been approved, et cetera, but that was kind of the staff's response to that question, just for everyone's information. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Alvin Bram.
With that statement by Alderman Toledo, my understanding that, I think this was, yeah, the report itself says, the applicant was present and indicated that they intend to imply, intend to apply to imply, intend to apply for a building permit in five months. So if substantially underway means that they applied for a building permit, the applicant himself stated that they hope to do it within an additional five months. So right there, it says that they're not substantially underway. By the own admission in the report, the recommendation in the report itself says that it doesn't meet that criteria for being substantially underway.
Any other comments? Clerk Spencer.
Polamsky.
No.
Bram.
No.
Toledo.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner. Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
12 ayes, 2 nays.
11 ayes, 2 nays, motion carries. Agenda item 6.10 is approved. Onto agenda item 6.18. This is a resolution, and I ask Clerk Spencer to read the resolution.
A resolution of the City of Elmhurst to approve and authorize the extension of a right-of-way license and covenant agreement with Cottage Hill Series LLC.
Put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Didn't it come out of? Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll defer to, I believe, Alderman Bram who pulled this.
Alderman Bram, did you pull this report?
Resolution corrects.
This resolution, yeah. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I spoke to this two weeks ago when it was a report, and there was significant conversation in regards to the contribution. I'm glad to see that there's no mention of the contribution in the resolution. To me, that does cloud and has clouded the judgment on this application. There was also discussion if it should be made part of the report and therefore the resolution by at least one alderman two weeks ago. I also believe that even though this has been called an encroachment, it's utilization of a city asset, permanent utilization of a city asset, and I think there should be cost for it. So for those two reasons, I cannot support the resolution.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Mulliner.
I have to respectfully disagree. I don't believe that this was clouded in any way. I think we made that very clear, that the potential donation was basically set aside as we made the discussion, so I don't want the impression that that clouded any decision that was made by this committee.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer.
Polamsky.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
13 ayes, 1 nays.
13 ayes, 1 nays, motion carries. Agenda item 6.18 is approved. Onto agenda item 7, committee reports. 7.1 is a report out of finance. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee that the City Council authorize the sale of 2018 general obligation bond issued in the amount of $10 million to be used to finance current and upcoming storm water improvement projects, the remaining costs of the water meter change-out project, and for facility improvements to public safety buildings, metro train station costs, and hardening improvements to storm water pumping stations.
Okay, to put.
Signed by, well.
Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
Schnipped you there.
Signed by Kevin L. York, Chairman; Mark P. Sabatino, Vice Chairman; Tina Park, and Mike Brennan.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report. Recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Sabatino. Alderman York, your report.
Thank you, Your Honor. So everybody's had the opportunity to read the report. I thank a few aldermen for reaching out and expressing their thoughts on this and asking, you know, great questions about this general obligation bond issue. We, as a committee, we heard silence in public works. We were, you guys had on your agenda the prioritization of projects and stuff like this, but I think we're all, you know, quite aware of what's going on. We did attach a schedule listing the analysis of the current bond need, including the Messiah Lutheran Project, Christ United Project, SESMP Phase III Design Engineering, and the Water Meter Replacement Program. So all that's itemized. It, the projects that are identified that are in progress total about $6 million. We also considered the projects for the College View Jackson Stormwater Projects, two of those projects, that will be about $4.3 million, bringing us to a little over $10 million, $10 million, $300,000. So that's kind of what the report says. Just to kind of bring everybody up to speed, we did, you know, think about very cognitively our debt management policy, the goals and objectives of that. We thought through all of those, and we discussed all those. We talked about this at two committee meetings, and thus, thus the report is issued. As I've talked to people over the past couple days about this, I thought there were like three or four points that were worth raising besides what's actually described on the paper of the report, and so here I go. There are still about $2 to $2.5 million in funds from the 2016 GeoBond issue that are yet to be utilized, and they're kind of included in that column in red that you read about. That's part of the $11.7 million of funding from previous bond issues and other sources that's itemized in that analysis that was attached to the agenda item. And truth be told, the schedule that was attached to the agenda item should have been titled "Analysis of Current and Near-Term Bond Needs." In that regard, the city has typically looked forward regarding capital needs when we're contemplating debt issuance so that we do make good decisions. In other words, looking forward for projects a year or two is not a new concept. In the past, we've also utilized bond refunding to kind of fill some holes, maybe the, you know, $2 to $4 million hole aside from another brand-new bond issue. So unfortunately, right now, things can always change in the economic markets, but there's no refunding options that are available to us until about 2021. At least that's what our crystal ball says now. Debt service payments for the proposed bond issue that we're talking about tonight would begin in September of 2019. So we'd get the proceeds in November-ish, December-ish, and we wouldn't make our first payment until September of 2019, which would be an interest-only payment, followed by a principal and interest payment the following March, and then interest payments only every September thereafter. So that's kind of how the payment schedule goes on those. If we want to talk about costs extrapolating from the debt service schedules that we reviewed for this particular GeoBond issue, each one-half percent of interest rate equals about $62,000 in year one, $50,000 in year two, and $48.6 in year three, or to really kind of cast it in the overall term of the bond, interest cost is about $670,000 higher for each half a percent of interest rate that's added to the issue. Given the Fed is talking about another quarter percent rate increase yet in 2018, and we don't know, you know, two to four cycles of probably that same kind of increase over the course of 2019, it doesn't take a genius to figure out that interest costs are going to go up. So this would fit into, and we know that we need some additional capital, even if one or both of these projects wouldn't go through, there's other projects identified that will be identified in the ordinance. So bonding for the bank-qualified $10 million now, which is a cheaper bond than one that exceeds $10 million, you know, kind of goes to the goal of letter F, which is consider market timing, take advantage of favorable market conditions. And then my final kind of talking point is, is that in talking with Finance Director Trosin, the Stormwater Debt Service Fund, that's the one that's funded by the quarter percent Home Rule Sales Tax revenue stream, could absorb the first two years of debt service for this new GeoBond issue that we're talking about tonight, and perhaps even a little bit more than that. That's just how we kind of see it right now. And this is a fund that is monitored for income regularly by staff, so we know what's going on there. It's certainly not a long-term solution, but at least for now, it does have some capacity in the near term, and by policy, that fund is due for review by this committee every three to five years. So I'm happy to try and answer any questions anybody else may have, but I think that the committee, like myself, we just don't want to run around issuing debt for no good reason. That's why we have a debt policy, that's why we followed it. We use debt responsibly. There is, one of the biggest things about debt is it provides intergenerational equity for projects such as this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, or try to.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Alderman Bram.
Yes, I first want to thank staff as well as the committee on this. There was only one question that I can think of that wasn't covered somewhere in the report or the extra material. The one piece that I do want to highlight, again, is the debt policy of being under 5% of the debt limit as stated in our code, and as the well-written report states, including this bond, if it moves forward, we would be at 3.84%, which is, I don't know if it's significant, but maybe you can call it significantly under the 5% debt limit. The one question that, just more for my edification or my curiosity, is, is this the closest we've become, and maybe this is a staff question for Mr. Trosin, to that 5% cap limit over the last couple of decades? Because I know last year it was creeping, I don't remember how high it was last year, and then obviously adding more debt creeps it up a little bit more, but where was the highest point of reaching that 5%?
Alderman York, you want to hazard a guess?
Not particularly.
Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. I just want to take a brief opportunity to thank the committee for all their work on this, and also to call out Alderman York. He went above and beyond in answering some of my questions today at the last minute, so apologize for the last-minute questions, but I thank you very much for getting back to me and helping me to be comfortable supporting this report. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Levin.
I would just like to say that I do appreciate, this is a well for staff and the committee, it's a well-written report. I think there's probably not a lot of questions because it is so well-written, and I appreciate the in-depth analysis. I get very nervous when I see, you know, we're adding a lot of debt, we have a lot of needs in terms of our storm water, but it seems, from reading this report, that we have done it in a controlled way so that we are staying within a reasonable amount of debt, far below the 5%, as Alderman Bram pointed out, so I will support this.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Clerk Spencer.
Polamsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays, motion carries. Report is approved. Onto agenda item 8, reports and recommendations of appointed and elected officials. 8.1, Mayor Morley, that's me, I have four quick things to add. One, Alderman Polamsky already talked about, that's the Youth Commission, or the Commission on Youth, has a speaker tomorrow night. You can look that up online and get the details. It's at Bryan Middle School. Military Ball coming up, mark your calendars, the 27th of this month, and you can go to their website for information and tickets. JC's Distinguished Service Award is the 24th. That's also the day of our real estate forum. And where's the real estate forum?
It's at Cottage Hill.
Cottage Hill Station?
Yep.
You can get that information online. Distinguished Service Award this year is on the 24th as well. The deserving recipient is Kathy Jordan. Get your tickets now to see her receive that. And finally, Fire Department. I want to thank the Fire Department and all involved, staff included. They had an open house yesterday from 12 to 4:00. They had over 1,200 attendees, and it was a great turnout, even though it was a bit of a chilly day. City Manager Grabowski.
Thank you. One item, I had a request from an alderman to talk about the water meter change-out program. I just want to be very brief tonight, and what I'd like to do is then gather additional information and take that to the Finance Committee to have a full report on that. But as the council will recall, we changed out, or were in the process of changing out some 14,000 water meters citywide, and by and large, the change-out has been going very well. There have been some hiccups as we've gone through, and I know that on social media, some of the residents have voiced some complaints. We have reached out to most, if not all, of those residents who had issues, direct issues with their billing, and we have been able to resolve, again, all, most if not all of those issues as well. It may not be reported back on social media that it was resolved, but I, trust me, that has happened. So we are going to put additional information together and take it to the Finance Committee to share that.
Any other reports? Alderman Honquist.
Two.
Two.
The first is, I wanted to bring up Access Sports. For those in Elmhurst that are not familiar with Access Sports, it is an organization that was started here in Elmhurst nine years ago for children with special needs, and it provides sports, basketball, soccer, baseball. I think they tried track, and they're doing track again. So basically, all year round, they're offering some sort of program. There are 70 athletes involved from 13 communities in the western suburbs now, and there's over 100 volunteers, mostly kids here in Elmhurst. So it's a great program. If you haven't heard about it, I'm introducing it to you. And their big fundraiser is on November 2nd, so we will not have another City Council, so I want to do it tonight. And they have tickets available, $10 for adults, $5 for children, and plenty of sponsorship opportunities if you're so inclined. And again, that's on Friday, November 2nd. I think it's from, I saw the time here a second ago, and now I'm dropping it, 5 to 8. Yeah, thanks, Kevin. And then the second.
At Nights at Columbus, it's a spaghetti dinner.
Oh, Nights of Columbus spaghetti dinner. See, I think I'm saying it, and I can't read because I'm blind. And I don't want to wear glasses yet, which is an egoist thing. And then the second thing, this summer, we had Cynthia Thomas come from ComEd, and she talked about several programs. One I took advantage of, which was a program between ComEd, Nycor, and I think People's Gas, they'll come out and evaluate your house. They did for me. It will save me roughly $1,100. They replaced most of my lights, wrapped some of my pipes, did some really good stuff. If you've not taken advantage of the program, it's free of charge. The people that came out were very professional, they did a great job. I think like a lot of people, we like to make fun of utilities. This is actually a very good, solid program, and it's available for everyone. And those are my two announcements. Thank you, Mayor.
Fantastic. Any other reports? Any other business? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kennedy, second by Alderman Dunn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're adjourned. Thank you.